We began the meeting. We did the flag of allegiance. Everyone's here. We are going to, we're going to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session at this time. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The purpose is being personnel.
For a personnel matter, yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. So executive session. Here we go. Thank you, everyone, for your time and patience. We are going to go right to approval of the minutes from our March meeting. And if anyone have a chance to look through these?
Yes.
Great. I will make a motion to approve the March 2022 meeting minutes. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So we have approved the minutes. Thank you. We're going to move into regular business, starting with WLS report. We're going to not linger on anyone. People are late in the day already.
Yeah, Beth says I have two minutes. You take three best points. One needed to take the floor and the other one to conclude. Anyway, just very briefly, there are two things. One is good news, one is, the other one is not so good news. You are probably all aware of the situation in the guts of Mount Vernon.
Yes.
We are, I am quite concerned that the, Mount Vernon is in serious danger of losing its status as a library because it has not been complying over the years with the requirements of the state, filing reports, special financial reports, and that raises all kinds of flags about management of finance, et cetera. In fact, their 2020 report, financial report, has not yet been submitted and still in the process of being completed. And also the application, the registration application, it's a price to learn that has not been formalized, has not been completed. So there are a number of mandatory requirements that a library should comply with as far as the state is concerned that have not been complied with, and that is putting that library in danger. As I said, I'm going to be very brief on this. The board, the WLS board, has been very concerned about this issue and instructed the director, executive director, to work very closely with the director in Mount Vernon and his staff to try to complete this financial report for 2020 and submit it to the state as quickly as possible, and also to help the library complete this registration and submit that as well. And therefore Terry has been working very diligently with the library director and his staff. He has not found, he told us the other day, he has not found the board, the library board to be forthcoming. In fact, they are increasingly dysfunctional as time goes on, and it is likely that the board or agency will, might disband the board altogether. So the situation is fairly serious. During the executive session yesterday, Terry gave us the most up-to-date situation on that. He said that the preparation of the financial reports is going very well, and he hopes that that should be completed and submitted, as well as the registration. So at least on those two fronts, things are going, are going well. As far as the library board, et cetera, is concerned, that is another, another couple of things. What is the status of the central library which is housed in Mount Vernon? The decision has been made that they can, the interim library can no longer be housed in Mount Vernon. Therefore, it has to be moved elsewhere because the library is simply not fit and able to discharge that function. And it's so happened that the Piscile Field, the Piscile Field Library has offered itself to host the central library. From what we hear, they're well-equipped to discharge that function, and that has been discussed considerably at the PLD meeting this morning as well. And so there's a general agreement that during the, during a period of, what, two years, when the state is deciding the status of the Mount Vernon library, et cetera, the central library should be housed somewhere else, should be housed in Piscile. And the feeling in the board, Piscile Library, yes, I think it's called the Field Library?
The Field Library.
The Field Library, yeah. And the feeling of the, of the board, executive committee, WLS meeting yesterday, is that this should be done formally, in a formal resolution within the, within the board. And so Terry is working closely with PLD on the tax of a resolution that the WLS board will, will consider next Tuesday, which will formally entrust the central library to the, to the Field Library of Piscile. And then encourage, encourage Terry to continue working with the, with the library on the financial reports as well as the registration. Other issues, well, we'll leave it to the state to resolve. So this is briefly, the situation is not very comfortable. I've been quite vocal on this, urging the board as well as the WLS to, to give all the support they can to, to Mount Vernon, so that the, the problems of a few should not be experienced by the many, if you know what I mean. The inefficiency of the board perhaps, and, and the lapses on the part of the director, et cetera, should not jeopardize the, the privileges that the patrons in Mount Vernon should enjoy by having their library there. So everything should be done to minimize the damage, if I can put it that way. But we will see what, what this final situation is, and I'll try to keep you informed of the developments. So very briefly, that is Mount Vernon. The second thing is the slightly good news is that the New York State budget has finally been approved. And from the brief I have here, overall, the library aid received a slight increase of $99.6 million, an increase of $5.5 million from last year's allocation of $94.1 million. And this is a step in the right direction, but it still falls short of the $102.6 million required by this education law and the $123.1 million that the NILA, New York Library Association, was, was requesting. So we, we got something, but not everything that we wanted, but it was better than nothing. But the, since we have strong support from our 17 legislators and so on, so we hope that they will continue to put pressure on the state to not fall below this figure, at least to, to increase it as, as time goes. Public library construction aid will remain at $34 million. This is below the $45 million request that was made by the NILA, but it's still, still something. But it's important to know that the, that this allocation is $20 million more than the governor's proposed of $14 million. So that, that's good. And considering that the state legislators who are trying to support the new funding initiative this year, libraries fare pretty well, this is the assessment of the board. And so we'd like to thank all the people who worked very hard during the advocacy period. I think some of you participated in that. That has had an effect, and I'm pleased to say that we do have a lot of support from our legislators, including the 17 of them, and, and also from the county. That, that's a plus, something that we can work on and maintain. So that is it, really. Two things I wanted to say, the Mount Vernon library briefly, and the rather good news on the budget front.
Thank you. Thank you, Frances. President's report, I will be so brief and just say, since we last met, we released our strategic plan. As everybody knows, it was a long labor of many things, including love, but we're really proud of it and excited that it's open and readable by the public, and we'll keep you posted on next steps with respect to that. Director's report, Tom?
I am going to defer my report this evening. Just remind the board that we have a meeting again in two weeks' time. There is nothing of urgent matter to discuss, so, and I know it's, it's a late, a long night, so nothing to report per se. I might have, I will have some things when committees make their reports, but at this point...
That's Thursday, Nathan.
Yeah, it's coming up.
Great, thank you. Do we want to talk about either of these things? We don't need to talk about operational status of personal reports, right?
Nope. The only personal report that I have is essentially, we have hired somebody within the past month, so I would ask the board to make a motion to accept this new employee as a staff member here at New Rochelle Public Library. Toby Sevish has begun. She is our programming coordinator, a full-time position. Her annual salary is $70,000, and her start date was March 16th of this year. If I could have a motion?
Sure. Yep, I can make a motion to approve the hiring of Toby Sevish at the salary and start the Tom Dismission. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. He's hired. Thanks, Tom.
Oh, thank you.
Gavel time. All right. Great, we're off to our city reports. We'll start with the saving the best for first.
The budget committee?
Budget committee.
So I'm going to refer to, if you want to look at your minutes from last week, because we actually went through the budget, but we didn't have a forum, so we couldn't vote on it. So I'm just going to kind of run through what's written here because it's probably better than my memory. And there's also a document in your folder which says, it's sort of a tabular format, and it's got several columns, adopted budgets historically, and then there's three proposed scenarios. So there's like 7.59%, 4.19%, and 3.31% at the top of the page. Does everybody have the page?
Yeah.
Okay. So the budget committee met, and we, you know, we first asked Tom to work with the staff to, to develop, you know, a bottoms-up budget, including what, you know, what the needs were, that they saw the needs were for the library, and also obviously look for any potential savings we could get on our existing expenditures. And so Tom did that with staff and with Jean's help, and we asked them to put together three budget scenarios, you know, of a, a sort of budget scenario that meets all the...
Sure.
A budget scenario that kind of met all the needs as put forth in the work that I just described. A second budget scenario that, you know, was not a, was not, didn't meet everything, but sort of met what we thought were critical requests, and then sort of a worst-case budget scenario, that in the worst-case scenario, the biggest thing that we had to account for was the already negotiated salary increases. So in the, in the, in the dire scenario, it's really just the salary increases that are in there, and any other mandated things that we couldn't control, like increases to benefits, costs, and retirement benefits, healthcare, et cetera. So we asked, we asked that those three budget scenarios be proposed, and they were, prepared, and they were. And so the, the three scenarios that we looked at called, on the high end, it called for a 7.56% increase in the, in the budget year-over-year. Scenario two called for a 4.19% increase year-over-year, and scenario three called for a 3.31% increase. So that, those were the three scenarios. And the, you know, as I said, one of the, one of the items that we really couldn't control was the already negotiated salary increases per the unit contract, and escalating medical insurance costs, which again, and, and we can't control, and the, you know, the bill that we get from the New York State retirement system, which again, we don't have any control over. So those were like the, the three challenges that we had. The seven, the high-end budget scenario, the 7.56% budget scenario provided for all the increases I've just mentioned, plus the creation of a new library one children's services position focused on outreach with elementary schools and families, and also allows for increases in programming and collection and development, collection development funds. The second scenario, the 4.19% scenario eliminates the proposed library one position, so it doesn't have that additional position, and places the library assistant circulation services position on hold, but retains the proposed programming and collection development increases and keeps everything else the same. The 3.3, the low-end budget, does what, you know, takes away the things that I just described in scenario two, but also eliminates increases in programming funding and materials budget. And the, the elimination of some of the programming budget would be, we would lose programming because we are losing another funding source that used to fund some of that programming. So that would be a, a bad outcome. Well, I think a bad outcome in the view of the budget committee and the staff. So, and Tom. And so the, you know, I think where we, our recommendation is the, that we go with the middle scenario, the 4.19% scenario. And part of the discussion, I guess there were kind of two key items we discussed. One of them was, it's not no, never on the, on the new children's library position. We're filling another position now that was open that will help with staffing there, so we want to watch that and see whether, you know, after we fill the open position, whether we need another position or not. And then the other general thing that we talked about was that, look, we need to really keep a close eye on, as we hopefully continue to come out of the pandemic, what library usage looks like, because it's not back to where it was, and the way people using the library is obviously changing. And so I think the other question the budget committee was like, and that we need to remember for next year, is that we need to be asking those questions and really looking, is the usage changing? Is the way that we allocated resources historically the way that we should be? And we've already changed the way we've allocated resources, acknowledging the pandemic, but we just, I just think we all agree that we need to continue to really look at that as people's behaviors and how they access information and how they use the library potentially continues to evolve. So that's the recommendation. Do you have, and I know, Whitney, you're going to ask this question. Do we have the statistic around like what this, this would mean for, this proposed increase would mean for the average taxpayer?
Chuck? We do. This is from the finance commissioner.
Okay.
It's the 4.19% you see. Can you see this?
Oh, there we go, 4.19%. So it's, so, average annual homeowner, where's the increase?
The...
So the average...
I think every, all three scenarios were included in your packet.
Well, I, I got all of the form.
Does this mean the average homeowner, their tax bill goes up by 91 cents?
No.
No, I'm sorry, I don't read that. We're trying to get the number of like the average taxpayer.
We ask for this number every year.
Right. According to the finance commissioner, the average taxpayer in this city, and you know who knows who that person is, currently pays $353.16. If the budget that is the 4.19% increase is, is adopted by the board and is then voted upon by the, by the residents right here, the, the average taxpayer will, will, the increase will be $367.75.
It's a difference of...
So it's a difference of $14?
I don't think that's correct.
Yeah, so it's $14, $14.
Yeah. Right, okay.
$14. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So $14 increase in the average tax, whoever the average taxpayer payer is, their tax will be...
And the library's still, out of the totality of, let's say that each dollar that a resident pays, the library portion of that is, is one cent. It's still minuscule compared to the other.
Okay. Got it.
That's the number right here.
Got it. Got it. So, so that's the recommendation from the, the budget committee for 2022, 2023 budget. Any questions?
Can I just ask one question? Your recommendation is this because there was, was there a concern about going...
We thought 7.5% was just, was too much. Yeah. Yeah. And, and, and we thought, as we talked about the additional position, that actually the right thing to do is to fill the position that's vacant now and then see whether do we still need this new position.
And pretty much everything else is flat?
Yeah, with some, some materials increase. Yeah.
And a, and a small increase in, of programming monies, but literally every other account is flat, is flat.
Yeah.
I mean, despite the percentage increase, it's reasonably prudent because there are no increases in any, any other line.
And we would say, I think one of the things we talked about was inflation is obviously much higher than it's been in a very, very long time. And so, you know, that we, we acknowledge that, you know, where there's a, we run a tight ship here. We don't have a lot of, you know, leeway in the budget. So, you know, we may, we may, hopefully we finish the year in the black, but there's a risk depending on, you know, that we, thankfully, we have, you know, some money in our fund balance if we did, you know, heaven forbid, run into the red, but, you know, I think we feel like we're closer to, you know, there's not, there's no leeway in this budget that, you know.
Yes, I do just want to mention that although we're not adding that position of librarian one, Lisa has done such a fantastic job partnering with the school district that I now get emails about library events coming from Davis School. So I don't know if you still are in the elementary schools. So you probably get them also. So I think that that's wonderful, that we can't fill that position, but Lisa is kind of covering that for us.
Lisa, as our marketing communications person, really has been an extraordinary hire, and she has made connections in the school district and the, the public relations component. And as, as you said, Sarah, we now are getting, you know, a visibility that we, that we hadn't before, and we're lucky. Thank you.
Just for my own indication, when was the, the last time we had the, the library budget? Was there an increase then?
Yeah, there was.
Similarly named increase that was just basically covered the cost of our non-negotiable savings. I think we added the...
The assistant director position.
The assistant director.
That was a big item.
A big ticket item, and other everything else similarly, but a slight increase for programming and slight increase in material.
From year to year, and, and I know Chuck in particular has the history, most of our accounts have been flat, have been flat and continue to remain flat, and we're trying to be frugal with how we spend money. Our administrative assistant is really good at that. We've also been reasonably successful in grant writing and have been able to obtain grants in a variety of places to allow us to make improvements, but it's, it's a work in progress.
Thank you. Thank you to the budget committee for your work on this. It's a not easy task every year. Appreciate your work and thought and thoughtfulness. I'm on that committee.
Yes.
So thank you, and thanks to Dean and Tom for bringing us here tonight. Do you want to make a motion?
Sure.
Everybody to vote on?
I will make a motion to approve, approve the budget that calls for a 4.19% increase year-over-year. I guess the total budget amount is 6.232 million, 600, sorry, $6,232,679 with a tax levy of Can I read?
All in favor?
Daniel.
Daniel. Aye.
Aye. Hey, any opposed? Great, the budget passes for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you. Budget committee.
A lot of people. Thank you. Great. Do we have any buildings and grounds which we now have for tonight? Community relations, I think that's first.
I'll just be brief. Like, as you stated, Lisa has done a fantastic job doing outreach from attending council community service meetings, meeting with the school district. She's going through the website, looking at broken links, updating social media posts, the met with some community leaders in various community sectors, and they're putting the posts in bilingual. I believe some of the posts are now bilingual. Again, also Denise Lang, I give her her props. She does the outreach out there. They're hosting a job fair with collaboration with Third Source that is coming up around...
And I'd also like to add Nikki Fudge, who is our social media coordinator.
Absolutely.
She is on it, partners with, with Lisa and everybody else in the staff, and our e-blasts are wonderful, and we have a new, a new newsletter that came out that really looks great. So we have a good, we have a good team working in, in that area, and with the addition of Toby Sevish, who's working on programs, we've already seen positive, less of positive movement in that direction, too. And if, if you're done, I just, I would like to mention that, as you folks know, we are the extraordinarily lucky recipient of the New Rochelle Public Library Foundation grant monies from year to year. And typically, the process is one in which I reach out to our staff, our department heads, and organically, we build a, a grant request that relates to the things that we see that we need done in the library. And this year's no exception. The staff are, are so excited to have this opportunity to, to make a difference in terms of projects that relate to children's services, teen services, adult services, you know, programming and outreach, you know, technology. And so to, to that end, I have two documents that I've shared with you folks. One is the grant request for the foundation to continue that really relates only to the main library, and the second one is the grant request from the foundation that supports the Huguenot Children's Library. And I don't know if we need a vote, but I would ask you if you, if you've looked at it, if you have any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, I would love a sense of the board that this is acceptable. The, the foundation wants to support us, but they also understand how important the board is in terms of working through these requests.
And Tom, you're talking about the wish list?
The wish list, both for Maine and HCL, Lucille?
Yes.
I thought it was really creative. I liked the idea of the community cookbook and I know the Legos. I mean, I feel sorry for whoever's sorting those. It's a great idea to have those.
Well, you know, it's so interesting, we had this, we sort of put it out there that we were looking for Legos, and the community responded in a way that everybody was really sort of shocked. So we actually retailored it so that we purchased some Legos, but also find a way to sort of organize them, because we all know that Legos are really tiny. But yeah, no, I mean, that's the thing about our staff that's wonderful. They're, they're inventive, they're invested, and so there are all these things. I mean, our teen librarian has come up with some great recommendations. You know, our adult services, we're improving our scores collection, which is sort of an unknown gem. We just received 150 scores of, from a New Rochelle resident who was a retired Broadway, who just retired from Broadway, and so it's, it's, it really reflects across the board the sorts of things that our community needs, and it's not specific to any one area or any one type of collection. So, you know.
I love also that we're partnered with our own art student volunteers from high school. I love that kind of collaboration.
At HCL.
Yeah. We have an HCL. My friend, my son's best friend loves the chess club, so he's been here.
The chess club has really taken off.
Yeah. My daughter's doing that. It's really great. Phenomenal.
Yes, as a footnote to the whole thing, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, we had Charles Curtis.
Charles Curtis.
Yeah, we talked to the rotary club about the community engagements and how different elements in the community are involved in this exercise, and it was nice to hear his complimentary comments about what the library is doing in this regard.
With that being said, on the Charles Curtis side, these are community relationships.
Exactly.
Connecting, community, just for, for the record, that was on a meeting with the city, two programs that are coming up, and just, just announce it to the community, everyone here, probably hasn't heard it. The first time homebuyer now paying assistance or program. There is a real estate industry professional meeting. It's not open to the public, just real estate industry professionals, that's on April 26, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., in-person at New Rochelle City Hall. And then they will have the general public session, May 11, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., actually here.
Here, absolutely.
And in addition to that, there is the announcement of the ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Fund, that the city has, has allocated a certain amount to both businesses, nonprofits, and tax incentive organizations. The funding can be used in a variety of ways. One is funding for new programs for sustainability, that brings an innovative transformational idea to whatever the organization is doing, or for businesses that perhaps are affected by COVID and need to revamp their, let's say, facade, or something that, you know, they have to do differently. Many restaurants are now have takeout stations, right, that Uber and all these other people, maybe that needs to be announced. So these are just ideas off the top that I've discussed. And also hazard pay. Businesses can apply to provide hazard pay for their employees who were actively operating during COVID-19. Again, we encourage businesses across, across New Rochelle to apply. You can reach out to the Department and will provide some guidance. And in regards to nonprofit sector, you can reach out to Charles Curtis, and he will provide a free hour of consultation to guide you through it, answer questions, what works, and how you can build your budget.
Interesting, because yesterday in the evening, the, you know, the Chamber of Commerce Network, many were in there. This came up, Martha.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, you mentioned something to that effect, and everybody was all ears.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we need to vote on this wish list?
It's not formally. I think if it's the sense of the board that these, that these grant requests seem appropriate, I can then inform the foundation that the board was in agreement that these are appropriate and meets with their approval. Thank you.
Excellent. Great. Thank you, Daniel, and Tom. That brings us to the Finance Committee, and I know we have an item.
Yeah. Sorry, talk to Tom.
All right. Just received the resolution. So there are some edits that need to happen here. And the resolution says United People's Bank. We had voted on MNT Bank, but bigger than that is, United People's Bank doesn't exist anymore because MNT acquired United People's Bank. So that adjustment has to be made. And also, because it's coming from the Finance Chair, the Finance Chair would need to be the signatory.
Or not the, not the Board President?
Yeah, Finance Chair. And those adjustments have to be made, and then we can sign off on May 5th, and be good to go.
So we'll do that at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
That's all.
Good, thank you. Thanks, Cory. Thanks for your work on that. I know that's been a long time coming. Personnel Committee.
Nothing to report.
Great. Okay, thank you. Policy Committee.
You need my mug? Okay.
Do we have to read it out?
Oh, no.
We should, yeah.
Okay. We have a policy on photography and videography. Photography and videography by library patrons is generally permitted if it is strictly for personal use. While the library is a public place, it is considered a limited, a limited public forum under federal law. We reserve the right to reasonably restrict the exercise of free speech rights in our buildings, particularly when such conduct is disruptive to other patrons and staff and inconsistent with the library's mission and code of conduct.
Thank you. And this is consistent with policies in, in, of other libraries in Westchester. So we appreciate your research and work on this. Do you want to ask for a vote, a motion to approve?
Sure. Can we have a motion to approve the photography and videography policy?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great, motion passes. This is a new policy of our library. Thank you very much, Policy Committee. Excellent. Special Projects Committee. I already talked about the strategic plan.
We finally got through that.
Yeah, we finally got through that. So we, well, I, we had formed, no, because now we have to. Right. So part of what we're looking at as a next step, following the release of our strategic plan, is forming a working group to decide what comes next, what do we implement first. This is something that the Special Projects Committee, which was our strategic planning committee, but will kind of re-morph back into its original form, will.
So it's needs assessment.
It, it was our needs assessment, but it's really our strategic plan, which is really a special project. So I think we can kind of, yeah, we can, but we will, we will be meeting in the next, oh, I don't know, before the, the next meeting in May, but definitely before the meeting in June to discuss formation of a working group. The working group will consist of board members, staff, and we're looking at hopefully bringing in one or two members of the public. And, you know, we obviously want to make the process as transparent as possible. And so just stay tuned for more on that.
I'd like to thank the entire community for being involved in this process. Like, that was one of the things, we really needed everyone's input, so that the final product is a holistic product. It's not coming from the board, it's coming from the entire community.
That's right.
Thank you for the leadership.
Thank you, Cory. And, and we're extremely grateful. And we also heard from our consultants that the level of engagement was more than they've ever seen. So even though the number of like 2% sounds small, it was phenomenal that we got people's opinions, and we, we really tried hard through many different avenues to, to, right, to, to reach as many people as we could, and feel, feel good, and feel that the, the plan is really reflective of, of that input.
Yeah.
Thank you, and thanks to everyone for, for participating. Great. We have arrived at the public discussion section of the meeting. Public to be heard.
Vince, Vince Malafatana. Mr. Malafatana, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Would, would you come up here, Vince, please?
What's that, Nick?
Thanks, Stephen.
Testing.
Hello.
How you doing, Vince Malafatana? I haven't been here in a, a while, but I thought I'd come about this budget thing. Can you tell me, before I read my remarks, the percent increase in the budget, if I, because I really couldn't hear you guys too well, I think it was 4. something percent?
Four, yeah, 4.19%.
And what is the percentage rate in tax levy increase?
I think, I think that's the percentage that the tax levy increased.
Oh, I thought that was the percentage spending.
That's the, that's the, that's the percent in the budget increase and the percent that the tax levy would increase as well.
At the same amount?
I believe so.
I don't believe, that's usually how it's done. One is a percent in the increase in spending, and I think that was 4, 4 point something. What is the increase projected in tax levy?
4.13%.
4.13%.
I'm sorry?
4.13%.
4.13%.
Oh, okay. Again, I thought that was the increase in the spending. So the tax levy increase is 4.?
One's 4.19, the other's 4.13.
Maybe I better write it down. Look, Ekman, please excuse my, my processing.
No, no.
Hit me with the tax levy increase, and I, I'll, I'll try to block out the others.
Yep. So that, the, the tax levy increase is 4.19%. The average homeowner tax increase is 4.13%.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, look, I do appreciate you guys trying to, you know, pester your way through these things, and come up with something reasonable. But I do think it is a bad message to the community, given the rather dramatic rate of inflation, highest in 40-some years, that the public is suffering, that everybody has to cut back, everybody has to reduce, like myself and my family. And may, it may have had some small impact on your programming, but you should have adopted a lower increase, if nothing more than to assign to this community that you actually care about the money that they have to dig into their pocket to give you guys. Now, I heard somebody say it's $14 a year or something. I, I, maybe I didn't hear it properly. Well, look, I understand that. And of course, just like with the school board, nobody will vote, and that's the way everybody likes it. You know, God forbid, we elect you guys in November like normal elections, where we might get an actual turnout of the population. I know the school board is, is totally against that idea. But in any case, as a citizen in town for 40-some years, I've had to cut back on my own things. I sleep with a hat on at night because I can't afford Con Ed. My Con Ed bill is going to go up by $400 a month in the winter for a small house with the same gas usage. So I think you have missed an opportunity, as stewards of the taxpayers' dollar, to send a message that we care. I care about the library. But I do think that in these times, caring more about May than a few programs that might be affected was really where your mission has failed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public to be heard member is Ms. Marjorie Sacks. Would you like to speak today?
I just want some clarification since the next meeting is May 5.
It is, it's.
At 7:00?
7:30.
Set, no, actually, it's, 7 o'clock is the formal budget hearing that, that we will hold. And then, and then we will have, we will have our monthly meeting at 7:30.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions or thoughts to share, or we adjourn? If not, I would make a motion to adjourn, and I can say it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all. Thank you.